All right, well, why don't we go ahead and call this meeting to order? The Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, meeting of the Falls Church City Council is now called to order, and we want to welcome you all, and thank you for joining us this evening. Madam Clerk, do you want to read the requisite notice?
Yes. Oh, I'm getting an echo. Oh, I think we've solved it, okay. This meeting has been posted and will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-308.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council will be present at this meeting through electronic means. Members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings, and on FCC TV, Cox 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. Public comments will be accepted virtually, and those who sign up will speak via the meeting video platform. To speak on a public hearing item or provide general public comment, complete a speaker form at www.fallschurchva.gov-publiccomment. Before noon on the day of the council meeting, following submission of the form, you will receive emailed instructions to join the virtual council meeting. Written public comments, including those regarding public hearing items, sent in advance of the meeting, will be accepted at cityclerk@falschurchva.gov until noon on the day of the meeting. These comments will be sent to City Council daily and summarized and presented during the written comments agenda item. Comments received after noon on the day of the meeting will be forwarded to City Council and summarized at the next regular meeting.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So, let's go now, rise, if we can, wherever you might be, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know if we have the flag we can put up on the screen, Ms. Mester, but...
It's coming up now.
Coming up now, okay. So whoever is on this call, wherever you might be, we'd ask that you please rise, and hopefully have a flag somewhere in your house, but if not, there's one on the television. So we're going to go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you do roll call? I don't recall that.
I will do that, thank you.
All right.
Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here. All right, so let's get on with the business at hand, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to public comment. Will you summarize the written comments for us?
I will. We got two comments about the Smart Scale grant application that's on consent this evening. VPESS and the Falls Church 29 Committee provided letters of support for the grant application on the agenda for the Route 29 South Washington Street Improvement Project. We had some stormwater comments that came in after the last regular meeting that were about a topic you were talking about then. In support of stormwater management projects under consideration were Carol Sly of 304 Shadow Walk. Fred Thompson, the chairman of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Stormwater Solutions at the Broadway condominiums 502 West Broad Street, asked that the Broadway condominiums be included in any discussions of stormwater remediation projects. Jennifer and Gabor Chachis of 709 Hillwood Avenue wrote in support of funding stormwater projects. Todd Friedlander of 801 Hillwood Avenue wrote that the bigger discussion about better watershed management can happen while the city is fixing the known flooding problems in the neighborhoods with priority projects. Dave Gustafson, Chair of the Stormwater Task Force, provided data about the number of homes surveyed that would be impacted by completing priority stormwater improvements. The following opposed the proposed stormwater management projects for fiscal reasons, Dave Russell, Mara Pelz, and Mara T. Roberts of 444 West Broad Street. On traffic calming, Jess Hagenbart asked for traffic safety improvements near Thomas Jefferson Elementary School and throughout the city, and Mark and Olga Kasher wrote to support Ms. Hagenbart's comments. Anne M. Pennison of West Greenway Boulevard asked for traffic safety improvements near the elementary school as well. And Charles Plymeyer of 115 West Marshall Street asked for a sidewalk extension at the top of West Marshall Street. For the proposed Washington and Broad/inside project, we had a number of comments, and these comments will also be incorporated into the Planning Department project file, which goes along with the project as it moves through the process. Anne and Mort Dworkin asked that the project consider the needs of older residents who wish to stay in the city by considering larger apartments and other amenities. Mary Chavez of 215 Lawton Street forwarded legal questions about the sale of the city-owned parking lot. David Tatts outlined concerns about the project as related to Clarence Don's Beach Shack. Diane Mullars asked questions about planned access for those entering from the west side of the project. The following opposed the sale of the city-owned parking lot. Jennifer Akins of 205 Buxton Road, Linda Becker of 303 Forest Drive, Tracy and Douglas Biggs, 209 North Van Buren Street, John E. Bottiker, Fred Bonner, 1009 North Tuckahoe Street, Meredith Bork, 216 West Jefferson Street, Julie Felgar, Deidre Geizer, 122 West George Mason Road, Kimberly Henneberg, 1005 Hillwood Avenue, Asia Quaja, Mark Kay of 106 Tollgate Way, David Langford, Forest Drive, Angela Newbern, Susan Robertson, 201 East Broad Street, Gary Sauner, 114 Tollgate Way, Lisa Veruxes, 301 Grove Avenue. The following were opposed to a Whole Foods store, Taryn Kaczynski of North Washington Street, Brenda O'Hanlon was also against the sale of the city-owned parking lot, and Adriana Ray. The following supported a Whole Foods store, Nadira Etzalya, Richard Leibowitz of 313 Hillwood Avenue, Lorraine Wu, and Karen Kazmoski of 215 Midvale Street. The following opposed the project, Jorothy Potter Typhel, 809 West Broad Street, Sue Armstrong, Angela Dinkle of 700 Boar Metropolitan Place, Camille Dockery, Paul Dyser, Dave Hagai of 306 Shadow Walk, Sean Hayden, Rebecca Hill, West Greenway Boulevard, Kathleen Klein, 601 Popular Drive, Mark Massey, 203 Grove Avenue, Wesley Palmer Lasky, M.D., 912 Hillwood Avenue, Claudia and Eric Schultz, 107 Lawton Street, Nathan Scott, 135 West Annandale Road, Paul and Cynthia Whackerbarth, 304 Walnut Street, Elizabeth Ann Shaw, 91314 Robinson Place, I think it's 1314 Robinson Place, actually. Several people opposed the project as proposed, Dan Ayer, Lori and Brian Dunch of 211 East Columbia Street. The following supported the project, Ellen Gross, 303 Lincoln Avenue, Alex Hendel, 2759 Marshall Street, John Mayer, 211 West Jefferson Street, David Nassar, 415 East Broad Street, Kevin and Jennifer Sopp, 107 Hillier Street, Sean Dakin, 124 Whittier Circle, Karen Kazmoski, 215 Midvale Street. We also had a letter signed by approximately 50 people, and some of those folks also sent their own comments. I'm going to read their names from that letter supporting the project. Gina Kachichi, 200 North Maple Avenue, Martha Mazur, 708 Berry Street, Michael Diener, 125 Royal Court, Mark Werble, 113 Royal Court, Rich and Elizabeth Need, 700 Berry Street, Nicole Johnson and David Ortiz, 259 Gundry Drive, Sharon Van Duesen, 600 Langston Lane, Nicholas F. Benton, 400 James Court, Laura Connors Hall, 2923 Johnson Road, Andrea Robles, Ph.D., and Solon Simmons, Ph.D., 6361 Lyric Lane, Rob Donovan, 5896 Street, Jeff Thebert, 712 Sea Cliff Road McLean, Becky Manicon, 2234 Carmichael Drive Vienna, Andres Jordan, 6455 Woodbridge Road Alexandria, Al Creachman, 412 East Columbia Street, Allison Brown, 706 Popular Drive, Anduin Tu, 913 Lincoln Avenue, Anne Marie Blunkowski, 1012 Railroad Avenue, Anne O'Neil, 200 Pennsylvania Avenue, Anuradha Gupta, 135 Spring Court, Dylan Michelle Schnittl, 312 Pennsylvania Avenue, Bonnie and Andrew Sakalaris, 1024 Railroad Avenue, Cremen Medina, 307 Southwest Street, Carolyn Connolly, 455 South Maple Avenue, Curtis and Magaly Schaefer, 1280 South Washington Street, Delisa Vargas, 225 Katy Court, Dee Ellison, 298 Gundry Drive, Derek Mills, 206 East Jefferson Street, Dick Doyle, 304 Great Falls Street, Ellen Selby, 833 Villa Ridge Road, Emma Byer and DJ Bowman, 203 Buxton Road, Gardner Humphries, 706 Poplar Drive, Heather Henry, 407 Sherrill Avenue, Ian and Margaret Pryke, 513 West Broad Street, Jack Selby, 833 Villa Ridge Road, Jamie Lee, 463 Hampton Court, Jennifer Jacobs, 311 Popular Drive, Jeremy Snyder, 119 South Oak Street, Jim Loving, 200 North Maple Avenue, Judith Gates, 2643 West Street, Julie Janson, 1900 Southeast Street Arlington, Julie Creachman, 412 East Columbia Street, June and Mike Byer, 203 Buxton Road, Kristen Acuff, 206 East Jefferson Street, Laura and Christian Downs, 211 Midvale Street, Marion Jarrett, 200 Forest Drive, Maureen Bedetti, 323 Rensway, Nancy Brandon, 227 Forest Drive, Nancy Schneider, 202 West Marshall Street, Nikki Graves Henderson, 307 South Maple Avenue, Professor John A. Wyant, SES Retired, 112 West Greenway Boulevard, Rebecca and Sydney Shaw, 802 Villa Ridge Road, Reed and Irene Chambers, 315 Little Falls Street, Rich and Ellie Flaherty, 607 Fulton Avenue, Richard Eckfeldt, 228 Forest Drive, Richard Van Duesen, 600 Langston Lane, Rosemary D. Cora, 410 South Maple Avenue, Sally Eckfeldt, 228 Forest Drive, Sally Phillips, 200 North Maple Avenue, Sam Selby, 833 Villa Ridge Road, Sarah Fitzgerald, 502 West Broad Street, Sarah Flanagan and Steve Selby, 833 Villa Ridge Road, Sarita Gopal, 107 Reese Place, Sonia Schmidt, 153 West Annandale Road, Stephen Beltonson, 311 Hillwood Avenue, Susan L. Heinley, 210 East Fairfax Street, Terry and Dale Ruder, 1014 Railroad Avenue, the Robertson Family, 408 East Broad Street, Thomas Harder, 513 West Broad Street, Tom Gittens, 153 West Annandale Road, Vicki Doran Fontana, 2642 West Street, Victor Duca Cora, 410 South Maple Avenue, and Whitney Kestevans, 606 Greenwich Street.
All right, well, thank you. I think it sounds like most of the city signed one petition one way or the other there, doesn't it? All right, thank you very much. Is that the summary of the written comments, then, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's move on to the receipt of public comments. And for the first time in a while, we are now able to receive public comments from the commenters, as opposed to a summary of written comments as we've done in the past. So tonight's the first night, please bear with us, we may have some technical difficulties. For those who would like to speak tonight, you can either speak now, like a regular meeting, or you can speak when your item is called. So it works the same way as it does as our regular hearings from days gone by. So just please let us know if you'd like to speak now, you're certainly welcome to do so. The clerk has got a list of speakers, I do not, so we're going to rely on her to call the speakers. And again, if you'd like to speak later, please let us know, otherwise, we'll go ahead and be happy to listen to you right now. So, Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker?
Yes, and I would like to let you know Mark Werble did sign up to speak, but had another, something happened, he couldn't come, he sends his regrets.
Right.
And I will say that I will be timing for three minutes, and after you complete your comments, we'll just let you leave the meeting, and you can watch the meeting from one of our other locations. And so our first person we have on the list is Susan Robertson.
Hello.
Hi, Susan, we just ask you to state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Susan Robertson, and I live at 201 East Broad Street. Can I just go?
You have three minutes.
Yes. Thank you. My name is, I already said that. Though I have concerns about the Broad and Washington project, including height, the considerably higher number of apartment units compared with the previously approved project, the lack of residential parking at rates considerably lower than both code and recent new developments, as well as the potential for extreme traffic congestion at one of Falls Church City's busiest intersections, my greatest concern at present is the use of the city parking lot, which our valued small businesses rely upon. This deed, this lot was deeded to the city solely for free city parking, and the language in the deed makes it clear that it cannot be used for any other purpose. If it is, the city loses the rights to it, and it reverts back to the original owner or successors in interest. I find it very disconcerting that the city would so easily cast aside this deed's requirements, selling the lot to a private developer to construct apartment buildings for their profit, and changing the use to a mixed use, which goes directly against the deed. I am more than a little dismayed that the city is not only willing to sell the lot, but it is not undertaking to protect the city's interests in this matter, passing the weight and responsibility of legal research to the developer, and whose best interest it is to find a way around the deed. If the City Council isn't willing to protect the city's interest and honor their word, who can? The previously approved 2018 proposal did not use this lot. Adding the city lot serves primarily to permit an additional 44 apartments, and the residential share of the project is already too high. Our local cherished small businesses will suffer. The iconic State Theater, the critically lauded Thompson Italian, and local favorite Clarence Don's. These businesses will suffer both during and after construction if the lot is used, through the difficulty with access during construction, a challenging parking situation with no parking on the lot, and varied rotating and incomplete parking substitutions, and considerably diminished ambiance and flexibility of outdoor space and live music, with the multiple levels of apartment buildings looming over them to the height of 50-plus feet. How do we strengthen the arts and entertainment district by harming the very things that make it that? How are we the little city when we do not support our own small businesses? I am not anti-development, and as a union actress, I am a strong supporter of the arts. Creative Cauldron will have a home and Insights project, and Whole Foods can be here as well without needing the municipal lot. Please honor the city's word and support our cherished small businesses, which need more support than ever, having had to struggle through the COVID pandemic. Please vote against selling the city lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, our next speaker? I think you're on mute, Celeste.
We have Mary Chavez.
All right, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Tarter, members of council. This evening, I believe that there are two key issues that should be discussed prior to a decision on sending this project forward. First, should the city sell a municipal parking lot behind Clarence Don's? And second, should that lot be converted to mixed use, to permit residential apartments on it? Sixty-five years ago, the city was given this parking lot in exchange for a commitment to maintain it solely for free public parking. The terms of the deed are clear. The land is to be used for that purpose, or returned to the donor or his successors. It was not an outright gift for indeterminate use, or for the city to subsequently sell for monetary benefit. This was an easement bestowing a public good, and was agreed to by the mayor, offering the city's word of honor to uphold it. The city manager has now negotiated to sell the city lot, linked to payment to Insight for 64 public parking spaces within the new garage, essentially subsidizing the construction of the garage on this lot to support 44 additional apartments. That may ease the city's conscience and feed the developers' bottom line, but it seems to violate the intent of the original agreement, and could well cause the neighboring restaurants to go out of business. The city manager presumes the sale is a given to permit the project to move forward, with no analysis of whether the sale is legally defensible. This sweeps the legal issues under the rug, undermining citizens' trust in the city's promises and transparency. The terms of the negotiated agreement have even been moved to the end of the agenda this evening, to separate them entirely from the discussion of the Broad and Washington project, when the sale should be front and center to this discussion. In short, it is questionable whether the land sale and conversion to mixed use are justifiable under the terms of the deed. Construction on the lot would harm local businesses and diminish the revenues they pay the city, and it is unnecessary for the basic project, including Whole Foods, Creative Cauldron, and some 295 apartments, to move forward. We urge you to vote no on these issues, and to require Insight to complete the project without the municipal lot, as in the previously approved project.
All right, thank you very much. And by the way, the sale of the land will be heard with the remainder of the Broad and Insight project. So I know it may show up in an earlier version of the agenda at the end, but it will be heard together this evening. All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker, please?
I will, and I also can speak to that. That is just a formatting of other business is on a standard agenda at that point, but council can choose to address items in the order that they wish. So our next speaker is Al Creachman.
All right, welcome.
Hello, Madam Clerk, mayor, and members of the City Council. My name's Al Creachman, I live at 412 East Columbia Street, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on the application pending. I have been a resident of the city for 37 years. I have some appreciation of land use issues in the city. For 13 years, I served on the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Transportation Board, the IDA, and feel like I have a good sense of the history of the city in terms of its redevelopment, and also the prudence of its entering into various agreements for development. When I go back through time and look at the way the city looked back in the early 80s when we moved there, there was a lawnmower shop at the intersection of West and Seven. There was a lunch counter at Falls Church Drug, where the Starbucks is. There was a Grand Union. There was a rent video store called Coco's that was in the small development area. There was a place called The Ranch House, and Red Lobsters, and of course Anthony's. All of those businesses were impacted by the reasonable and inexorable forces of redevelopment that the city wisely proceeded with, to deal with the various fiscal issues, and of course the necessities of keeping financing significantly, and our tax base significantly up, to maintain the quality of our schools. I'm clearly in favor of this project. I think it is essential for the future of the city. I think that the legal issues with respect to the deed are resolvable, and it seems to me that there is a clear net benefit that the city is gaining through the additional public parking spaces that are going to be inside the building. You know, clearly, if you look at the intent of that deed, and the need to foster business and development, beyond the wildest imagination that anyone could think, that those parking lots, spaces, would now be serving such a major, huge, company-major, huge grocery store that would benefit the city as a whole, and really support our tax base, as well as bringing in this huge company that perhaps was the strongest in the country, and giving them a stake in Falls Church City. I think it's essential that we approve this project. I think clearly the weight of these comments favor those who are supporting this, and we just must recognize that development is going to be in the best interest of the city, and that the residences and the businesses that are proximately impacted also need to appreciate that by virtue of their choosing those locations, that they assume the risk of these development impacts. And that has been, you know, forever an attribute of what has occurred through the redevelopment process in the city. So I fully support this, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker, please?
Yes, the next speaker is Andres Jordan.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you see me? All good?
There we go, there you are.
Okay, excellent. So let me, I'm a bit of an outsider, and I'm Alexandria, so I wanted to bring maybe a slightly different perspective to the city, a city that I love. So I wanted to basically, a little bit of context as to the exercise I'm going to take us all through. I advise companies on how to design new strategies with the emerging trends. With that in mind, I would ask the city, at this point, to imagine if you were an iPhone, okay? What is Falls Church's content plan? What is it that's going to be on your phone to have people come to Falls Church? I am one that comes to Falls Church by choice, where I could go to Bethesda, I could go to so many other places, but I come to Falls Church because of Creative Cauldron. Creative Cauldron is an app, right, that people would come to the city for. And the apps, and everything that you see, everything that is evolved, everything that's come out of the phones and apps, is a product of creativity. And Creative Cauldron is one of those creative agents, right? But the interesting thing about Creative Cauldron, the interesting thing about what's happening to us in the digital world, is that there's a counter trend. The counter trend is a desire for analog experiences, hybrid experiences, right? So everything's about experiences now, everything's about a human-centered design, this new rage. So with that in mind, think of the city, how does the city become a destination? It becomes a destination by encouraging people to come to it, by seeing and having amazing experiences. And I tell you, not just because I'm a board member of Creative Cauldron, I was the first customer of Creative Cauldron in 2001. The experiences that we have at Creative Cauldron are second to none, they are just transformational, and it will make Falls Church continue to be a leader. We're a great brand, when I think of Falls Church, I think of warmth, I think of progressive, and I think of creative. So I'm here to support, I'm here to push, and in support of the project that will guarantee Creative Cauldron a home for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
I will, we have Gina Kachichi.
All right, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of City Council. My name is Gina Kachichi, and I live at 200 North Maple Avenue. I have been a resident of the Falls Church City for 27 years, first as a renter, then as a single-family homeowner, and now as a condo owner. I have been a business owner in Falls Church City for 26 years. I have been a volunteer in Falls Church City for 27 years. I am deeply invested in this community. No matter what decision City Council makes about the Broad and Washington development, there will be people who are unhappy. Some people will never support the project, no matter what accommodations are made. A yes decision on the Broad and Washington development will provide the following to everyone in Falls Church. The city will receive approximately $2 million in tax revenues per year. The city will receive payment for the existing city parking lot, and after construction is complete, will still have 64 free public parking spaces available in the center of the city. In addition to the 64 free public parking spaces, the center of the city will have an additional 76 public pay-to-park spaces. The Whole Foods grocery, Creative Cauldron, other commercial users, and residents will have their own parking in the garage. During construction, the developer is providing 65 off-site parking spaces that are 40 to 120 feet from the restaurants for their customers to use. The developer is also working on a plan to provide lunchtime parking spaces for the two restaurants during the three-to-six-month period, when there will be no onsite parking. During construction, the developer is offering to compensate retailers to help offset their rent, to minimize to minimize any additional impact of the project on parking and business. The city will have approximately 14,000 square feet, 10% of the site, of green space for public use, including a public plaza and a passive walking space, a walking park area. The city will have 21 new affordable housing units in perpetuity. Instead of building office space that will remain empty due to the changing business models that have become the norm since COVID-19, the developer is providing nine live-work units with the option to add 18 more. The residential units will provide the density needed to nourish our small businesses and restaurants and bring vitality to the center of the city. There will finally be a there-there, a lively, diverse live-work-play area in downtown Falls Church. I support moving forward with the Broad and Washington project because of all the benefits it will provide the city, its residents, and the surrounding communities that visit, work in, and regularly patronize businesses in Falls Church City. Thank you, and I encourage you, I strongly encourage you to support this project going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker, please?
That is what we have for this evening.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for coming out. Please stay tuned. We'll be getting to that matter shortly. In the meantime, we do have a few additional items that we're going to speak of briefly. And so let's now move on to the next item, which is the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department Annual Report, and their president, Adriana Palacios, will come and speak with us this evening. Are you here with us, Madam President?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Well, welcome, and thank you so much for your service to our community.
It's a pleasure.
All right. Well, so I know you have a PowerPoint, and you'd like to tell us a little bit about what you've been up to these past months and past year, and so we're very interested in hearing more about what's going on. Would you like to give us your presentation?
Sure, yes. First of all, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Our organization has been around for almost 100 years, making it one of the city's longest continuously running institutions. Just as the city of Falls Church has been have seen many changes, the volunteers continue to adapt and strive to remain a vital part of the community. For some of you who are not familiar with our organization, we would like to acquaint you with our history and charter, brief you on some important changes to our mission, and look to the future as we invite the city council's feedback and guidance as the elected representatives of the heart of the community we serve. And now I would like you to introduce you to Brendan Meehan, the chief of the volunteer organization.
All right, so we next slide. Good evening to the council and everybody online. For those I haven't met, it's nice to meet you virtually in this new world we're in. And for those I haven't seen in a while, it's great to see you again virtually. So a little bit of background on us, we are a nonprofit organization. We were formed in 1925, though we've actually been in operation since 1898. As you can see, our members come from very diverse backgrounds, and we all live in or work here in the greater Falls Church community. Over the years, the city has contracted with Arlington County Fire Department to provide 24/7 coverage with firefighter EMTs and paramedics. And we have a unique agreement between our organization, the city of Falls Church, and Arlington County that allows for our volunteer EMTs to serve alongside of Arlington County Fire Department and allows us to operate our own units. We primarily operate two ambulances and two utility trucks. Those are the smaller pickup-type trucks that you've seen driving around the city, I'm sure. We help provide extra emergency medical services, EMS, in the in the community, generally in the form of response to 911 calls, as well as standbys at large community events. In addition, we throughout the year, we provide safety education at the schools, places of worship, for scouting groups, and other community organizations. Next slide. So our original mission back in 1925 was pretty simply to extinguish fires and save lives and property. But obviously, times have changed, buildings have changed, codes have improved, and frankly, the requirements of being firefighters have significantly increased. As a result, our organization has also evolved with the times. And over the last 12 months, we've spent some time, some some deep thinking, introspection, to refine our mission statement, and I've got that here for you on screen to review. I wanted to draw your attention to the the bolded items there. We believe our key value proposition is providing our community with EMS and education to prevent emergencies from happening in the first place and to enable our community members to render aid until help arrives. Though our station is staffed 24/7 by paid firefighters and EMTs and paramedics, we have the unique ability with our organization to make their forces stronger by supplementing them and operating our own units. Next slide. So I wanted to go through a little bit of what's on tap for our business organization moving forward. Thanks to the amazing generosity of all the folks in our community, using all of our donated funds or using our donated funds, we've purchased several new items. We've got a new ambulance coming. That new ambulance is going to be four-wheel drive, so it's going to be much better in the snow. It's also got tons of new safety features for our providers and our patients. So our current ambulances, if you can imagine this, don't have airbags, don't have backup cameras. This new one's going to have a lift that'll help us get patients in and out of the rig safely. And not to mention, it's also going to have a much smoother ride. So if anybody's ever been in pain and been in the back of an ambulance, you'll notice how you you probably remember how you felt every single bump along the way. So we're really hoping to improve the quality for our providers and our patients. We've also spent some money refurbishing our utility truck so that it's going to have a more robust ability to help provide scene lighting for emergencies and other events in the city. That's a unit that's on call 24/7, so we can respond from home and bring that anywhere we need to. And then finally, we were in desperate need of some new cold and rain gear for our providers. The jackets we had and some of that equipment was just not cutting it any longer. So we are also making investments this year in some new winter jackets, and fingers crossed, those should be arriving in the next 30 days or so. On the staffing side, we've increased our scheduled shifts by 50%, which means our volunteers are typically in service now for emergency calls from the Falls Church Station, beginning 7:00 PM on Fridays, all the way through 7:00 AM on Sundays. We've also began to begun donating some of our used firefighter turnout equipment to departments overseas that are in need, used fans and breathing equipment to a rural department in Tennessee. We sold one of our ambulances to a rural department in West Virginia, and we sold our light air unit to a rural department in New Hampshire. Finally, we've also spent a bunch of time revamping our public education program. We've expanded the team. We've brought in some folks from outside the organization who have expertise in delivering content to the community. And we all, we started this effort right before COVID hit, and we've continued to adapt as we figured out what this new normal looks like for us. So with that, I wanted to thank the City Council and Mayor Tarter and Police Chief Gavin and everyone in the community for their continued support of our organization and for giving us some time to speak tonight. Adriana and I are happy to answer any questions you've got. And you can always reach out to us through the website, through our email addresses with any questions you may have. So thank you very much, and we're here happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you both very much. We appreciate the service you and your volunteers due to our community have done faithfully for so many years, so it's greatly appreciated. I'm going to go ahead and open up to questions or comments from my colleagues. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments for the chief, for the president?
Mr. Mayor, I do. This is Ross.
Yes, Mr. Littgenhouse.
Wonderful, thank you. Guys, thank you very much for this presentation. It's wonderful what you all do. Obviously greatly appreciated and valued in the community. I had a question about the partnership with Arlington County. I'm curious to know from a cross-training perspective, as you guys know, not only we share services, but we share funds and resources and allocation of those funds between the various jurisdictions. How does the training partnership work between our Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department and Arlington County? And this is Ross Littgenhouse, by the way. I'm not on video, but I'm here on phone.
Yeah, thank you. Great question. So it it works in several ways. In some respects, we are an independent organization, so we're responsible for training and onboarding all of our new members. Most of our members will go out to someplace like Northern Virginia Community College to get their EMT training. We do all of our continuing education in-house. We also have access to Arlington County's training resources. So whenever we need a refresher on their medical protocols, we have their providers come in and assist us along the way. We also do a fair amount of training side by side with them. So it's sort of a hybrid approach. There's some stuff we're responsible for, but they also provide us with with ongoing training and access to facilities and equipment as well.
And generally speaking, when it comes to the EMS EMT services, when calls come out from Falls Church residents or inside the city of Falls Church, generally speaking, what's, how often is it our Falls Church folks versus Arlington that are showing up? What's, I mean, I know you guys have a 24 to 36-hour kind of per-week staffing, but what's that blend?
Yeah, you know.
Unfortunately, our folks versus Arlington.
Yeah, so I kind of have to answer that in three different steps. So the first step is to understand that Arlington County has automatic aid agreements with all the departments in the area. So a given call in the city might actually be serviced by an ambulance from Fairfax and the fire engine from our station, or maybe it might be all Fairfax units. So right off the bat, you're going to get the closest unit based on GPS, regardless of what it says on the side. And I don't quite have that breakout, but I know it happens relatively often just based on unit loads and where folks are. And then I would say that, you know, we respond to any basic life support call or any call that sounds like they need an additional set of hands in the area. And our ambulance has a little bit of a wider response zone. So I don't have the exact stats, but I would say, you know, it's always mostly going to be the folks that are working 24/7. But if it's a, you know, a Friday night or a weekend call, there's a good chance that our unit will be requested and added on to the dispatch as well.
Great. And then one last question. Given the evolving kind of mission statement for you all that you presented tonight, what can we provide to help support that mission? Do we need more volunteers? Do we need more resources? What is it that you guys need from us?
Yeah, you know, two things that I think every volunteer organization in the EMS world or otherwise needs. We need people and we need money, right? All the money in the world doesn't help if I don't have people to drive the truck to a call. And all the people in the world doesn't really help if we don't have money to train folks and buy uniforms and keep our equipment up to date. So right now, you know, our membership is generally cyclical. We had a, as you can imagine, we had a large spike right after 9/11 hit, and we're sort of at a lower point in our membership right now. We've actually had a bit of an uptick after COVID hit. We had a lot of folks that have wanted to come out and help. So we've got some new members that we're training up, but I would say those are the two things. So for those that have the ability to, anyway, you know, financial support is great, but if you have any skills, if you're interested in being a first responder, obviously, we'd love to have you. And if you have additional skills, so, you know, financial skills, website skills, IT, all those things. We're in need of all those things, just like every other, you know, volunteer organization would be.
I would like to add that so a little bit of the community could help us. Once we're going, we're working on a survey that we're going to be sending to the community, and you can also help us by filling out the survey that is going to help the the public education team refocus maybe their, what they want to teach the community with your answers. And like Brendan says, I would like to also highlight that you don't have to be an operational member to help. You can also be an administrative member and just join us and with any skills that you have. We're always welcome. We're always welcome anybody who who just has enough time and willingness to help.
Great. Well, Adriana, Brendan, thank you guys very much. That's all I have. I really appreciate it.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you both once again.
Carter, can I just say something? This is Vice Mayor Connolly. I'd just like to say thank you, and I appreciate that you're going to be doing a survey of the community because I know that a lot of people sort of know about what you're doing, and I think that'll be helpful to be able to share that message even further to people in the community. Thanks for what you're doing. And I really did miss this year that you won't be having the open house because that is a favorite of my family for many, many years. And it's always good to see all the volunteers at your open house. So hopefully next year, we'll be back able to do that.
Yeah, we hope so. We we look forward to that event just as much as the community does. So it's tough for us.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder. So thanks for the presentation tonight. I was a member there once and some years ago. So my question is this, if the city were to be hit by a major natural catastrophe or man-made catastrophe, do you all have the capability to provide unit or units on the scene outside of the 20, outside of the 36 hours that you ordinarily staff the units?
Yeah, absolutely. So we all have, you know, pagers and emergency alert stuff that we can be, you can dispatch us out. So Arlington County has those resources. FM Lane and the folks on the police side have our contact info as well. So our ambulance can be put in service with short notice, as well as our utility truck for, you know, as I mentioned, for lighting and things like that.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you. As you said, Mr. Snyder, you've done first responding for many years. We appreciate that as well. Are there any other questions or comments? We do have another presentation about fire prevention from the Fire Marshal immediately after this. So but we want to thank you both once again for this great presentation and more importantly, for the great work you do for our communities. So thank you for coming out this evening and for your fine work. Let's move on now, if we can, to the next item, which is the Annual Fire Prevention Report. And I don't know if Fire Marshal Lane is on the screen or on the call, but we'd love to hear from you. Fire Marshal, if you're available. Mr. Lane?
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm down here in Wyatt's neighborhood, down in Waynesboro. I'm at a fire prevention meeting down here next two days, so I'm down here in a hotel room. All right, so fire prevention, it's a it's an ongoing thing, and this is the month we celebrate fire prevention. So the cooking, the theme this year is cooking. And cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries. Thanksgiving is the leading day for fires involving cooking equipment. The leading cause of fires in the kitchen is unattended cooking. So we want to make sure people stay near the kitchen or in the kitchen when they're cooking. We want to make sure people are testing their smoke detectors, make sure they are in place properly. If you have questions about smoke detectors, contact the fire department, or you can contact the Fire Marshal's office. And you should have a home fire plan so you can get out in an emergency. You should have two two ways out of your house. So the Fire Marshal's office, we are, we're pretty busy. We have one person, and one person is doing some administrative work, but he's retired and sitting at the beach. That would be Tom. But myself, so pretty much myself, and I get time to help me some. We have, we've done about 300 inspections annually, and that's going to go up a whole lot with all the new construction we got going on. We also have approximately 12 to 15 fires we investigate annually in the city, and that could be a vehicle fire or small fires, and we've had some several significant fires in the city. One of the significant fires was February 10th of this year, and we had a a house fire on Oak Street, South Oak Street. The resident came out of the house, there's smoke billowing at the front door, and she was standing at the front door trying to get somebody to help her. So we caught all this, they caught all this on the Ring video of her house. So she's trying to flag down somebody, and somebody eventually stops, and that was the SOPs who live very close to this resident. The SOPs, we gave them a heroism recognition back a couple of weeks ago. Because of the COVID, we have not been able to present it to them. But we presented them a heroism award, and they're very grateful for that. They they're in public service. They work for DHS. So they called 911 from their truck. They also kept the lady from going back in the house. She's standing at the door, so luckily she, they kept her from going back into the house. She's standing at the door. So luckily she, they kept her from going back into the house, which could commit more injuries or even the possibility of being killed. So we're very grateful that they took that action to help save her. So with the home fires, home cooking fires, there has been a significant increase in burn centers from people getting burned and from cooking, so from COVID. So everybody needs to be careful, make sure you're wearing proper clothing. And just be careful around the cooking. Don't leave it unattended. So if you have any questions about fire safety, you can contact the fire department or you can contact the Fire Marshal's office. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. We really appreciate it and the work you do day in and day out for our community. I'm going to open it up to questions or comments from my colleagues. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right. Well, then I'm going to thank you once again and let you know how much we appreciate the great work you all do. And let you know, we're going to be thinking about this come Thanksgiving next month. So thanks again for being with us this evening.
Okay, thank you. Be careful.
You too. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item, which is council request. Are there any council requests? All right, let's move on to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Carter. I've got a couple of things to report on tonight. And I'll start with the city's Use of Force Review Committee. As the council will recall, with the mayor's pledge to review the city's police department's use of force procedures and processes and policies, a citizen group with city staff is hard at work. They were appointed in July and they've been working through August. And my purpose of my announcement tonight is just to note that the Use of Force Committee is planning to reach out to the community as the next phase of their work as chartered by the city council to engage and to solicit the public's views on use of force with the city police department and also for public input on their interactions with the police department generally. So please stay tuned for communications about this. People will be asked to participate in survey instruments and other ways to participate in this community dialogue on this very important topic. So please stay tuned for that. That will go out through the city's OCOM office, working with the Use of Force Committee. So thank you to all the members of that committee for your hard work. Second, on terms of the school's in-person learning plan, city staff is working with the school administration to assist the schools in their second wave of in-person learning, which will be on November 10th. And the focus really in terms of the city's interaction with the schools is to help the schools with their transportation planning and making changes as needed to help people walk to school and to also help with traffic control for parents who choose to drive their children to school, as well as working with Nancy Hendrickson with the school bus fleet to just assist with their planning. Two pieces of news with respect to Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Our interim director of public works, Zach Bradley, informs me that we will be moving forward with the council's release of funding, the second piece of the sidewalk funding. The, we will move forward with the sidewalk missing link at TJ Elementary School. And we're working to get that done before November 10th. And we're also working to have bump outs, protected bollards and things like that to help those walking to school. So more to come on that, but I think we're moving in the right direction and looking forward to a safe in-person learning for our schools. I want to just note in closing, a couple of recognitions and awards that the city has received in the recent days. Last week was the Virginia Municipal League of all of the towns, cities and urban areas in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And the city was recognized with four awards of VML champions. And let me just list what those are briefly. Our COVID planning team was recognized by the Virginia Municipal League. And that was a joint team that was focused on the city, sort of planning out the city's overall response to COVID, beginning back in February, March last year. And our focus of this award is supporting Dana Lewis and our Housing and Human Services staff and our, and our service to help our most vulnerable populations in the city. Second, our Economic Development Authority and our Economic Development Office for their work in supporting our local businesses. And of course, you know, the, the grant program that the EDA funded and is being reimbursed, at least in part, with CARES money is a big part of that. But there are also really important things that we did to try to help our independent businesses succeed. Those include things like the Grab and Go banners to advertise for our restaurants, suspending zoning rules to help with parking and setting up tents and outdoor dining and pickup locations for businesses. Also, the public hand sanitizers that were installed, 10 of them. And the Open Responsibility Campaign. And then some nice touches, we did get the flowers up this year and the mural was painted this year just to help, you know, spread brightness and cheer in our, in our business districts. A third recognition is for an individual. Ed Lancaster, captain in our police department, took such great individual initiative throughout this COVID response. He hand-built many of the protective barriers that you see at the permits counter, at the commissioner of revenues counter, and also when you walk into the building, just to help, you know, have a barrier between the public when they come in to do city business. Set up the, he was our designated safety officer throughout our reopening process. And he also personally checks in on employees when they have fallen ill and organized meals and things like that for employees who have fallen ill. So Ed, thank you for that initiative and for all of your good work to help us get through this safely. And lastly, the VML recognized our Office of Communications. Right from the beginning of the pandemic, OCOM put out a daily update with really necessary and valuable updates for the, for the public. They ran that on a daily basis. And I think historically, we're going to look back on that, those records as a great sort of narrative of how the city navigated the early days of this pandemic. But through June 12th, that was a daily production and they moved to two times a weekly and keeping that information flow out to the public. Communication is, as we all know, is crucial to any emergency response and particularly a health emergency. So thank you, OCOM. And lastly, I just want to, we've gotten lots of plaudits for the Railroad Cottages project. But the most recent one that came in was the Virginia Chapter of the American Planning Association awarded the Railroad Cottages development with their Red Clay Award. And the Red Clay Award is a 40-year tradition with the Virginia Chapter of the APA. And it really focuses on sustainability and resiliency. And in their award, they noted that the city will serve as an inspiration to other communities as they're seeking to serve all, all their populations with housing. So congratulations to Pearson Smith Realty, The Young Group, Butts Wilbur Architects, and city staff, Carly Aubrey, and so many others who helped work this project through. And congratulations to the city council for being a leader in this area of housing. That's my report tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Shields, and congratulations to all, including yourself, for all the fine work we've been recognized about recently. Ms. Hardy has a question. I'll go ahead and turn it over to her. Ms. Hardy?
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Wyatt, for all the good updates. I was especially heartened to hear about fast progress, I think, near TJ and other kind of schools and transportation routes. So thank you for working in advance with the schools on making the next wave of reopening safe. While we're on pedestrians and walkability, I did want to bring up the pedestrian accident that we had last week on Broad and I think it was North Virginia. And so luckily, it sounds like the adult and the two kids are okay, which is, I think, a relief to hear. But I think it does bring up kind of the longstanding discussions we've had about kind of pedestrian improvements in the core downtown areas, especially busy intersections like Broad and Washington, Broad and Virginia. We probably have several other ones like Broad and West, I think, that come to mind. Could you talk more about some of the ideas? I know that one thing that I've circulated is the idea of using leading pedestrian indicators, intervals, I mean, which means you give pedestrians kind of a couple of seconds head start. And then even more progressive than that would be something like a full protected walk signal. So everyone has a red light while there's a white kind of walk signal for pedestrians. It really gives the most pedestrians the most safety. It's kind of the gold standard, I think, out there. Could you talk about where we are with evaluating intersections? Because I feel like that work should be coupled with the work around the schools. So as we're going to see more citizens in general continue to walk during COVID and then walking to school or biking to school, I feel like those improvements, especially if they're just programming changes, should be done as soon as possible as well.
Well, thank you. Let me speak briefly to it. And what I, this is an important topic, and I think it'd be good to schedule some time with our engineering staff on this. And so the, the city has, as part of signalization timing throughout our business quarters, sort of one of the objectives is to have the greens go in sequence to help with throughput of traffic. Another key objective is to ensure that pedestrians are safe, particularly in our commercial district, well, everywhere, but in these really high use areas in our commercial districts. So there is a balance between, you know, the, the sort of the flow of traffic and some of the things that you've listed. All of those do increase the signal timing. And, and so they do have impacts on traffic. And I think what your, your point is, let's emphasize pedestrian safety over, well, in terms of sort of finding the balance, make sure that pedestrian safety is at the forefront. So we need to just provide a report back on the latest engineering on that when we've looked at our signal timing. And we can discuss sections do have LPI and which ones do not. And we can have that discussion. So we'll, we'll bring that back for further discussion.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Duncan has a question as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Wyatt. Thanks for that report, particularly the calling out of the Railroad Cottages award. So gratifying that so many people worked on that project, private developers, staff, citizen boards and commissions, electeds. It's just great to see recognition for that carving, something good and beautiful out of the wilderness that was that location. My two questions are, one is about the census. I guess today's news suggests that we're just about at the end of the census process. And I'm wondering if we, you know, have reached what we believe is a full and complete count of everybody in the city. Is there a final push to make sure that we are at 100%? Any update on that? And, oh, the other question was the signage for the gun ban zone. You'd said originally that that was going to try to be happening during the month of October, hopefully finishing by early November. Is that still on track?
Thank you. So first, let me get back with you on the census and I'll get the latest percentage complete as, as we know it and get that out to city council. And the second item for the signage for the firearm safety ordinance that the city council adopted in August. We are, we have designed those signs. We put in the order for them and they will be installed soon. And so people should be looking out for those. And if they're, if the final sign is not complete by November 1st, then we'll have some temporary signage that will be put up prior to that. But that process is well on its way.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Ross?
Yes, Mr. Lickenhouse?
Thanks. Appreciate it. Wyatt, thank you guys for, for work up there at TJ. And a lot of folks spoke out on that. So thank you all for making quickly on it. Do we have any additional updates for the folks, South Oaks, South Lee, on their project?
We have been working with that community. Cindy Muster would be probably the most knowledgeable to speak of the latest provisions. Do you have a specific question or just a general update?
More of just, more of just an update for anybody that I know. Yeah, more, more of just if there've been any updates since last week.
Thank you, Mr. Shields and Mr. Lickenhouse. There's no, been no specific updates since last week. We have continued to receive the comments from the community, some individual ones, as well as one community member that consolidated a lot of feedback. Staff is reviewing that and will be preparing a holistic response back to the community based on the consensus, what we can change, not change, answer questions about heavy light solutions, also warrants for intersections and so forth.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question and remind me, just because there's been so much conversation on traffic calming over the last few months. What is the amount of money that we currently have allocated annually in the budget for traffic calming and/or spot improvement for sidewalks?
On the CIP side, we have $100,000 per year for neighborhood traffic calming for FY '21 going forward. So we're already spending and allocating the current year. And with council's consensus from last week's work session, the $400,000 for FY '20 is now fully available. We've already committed the $50,000. The $350,000 was on administrative hold is now available. That funding plus FY '21 will be used to clear the queue for light and heavy solutions for NTC minus the two sidewalk requests that I mentioned last week, which are Nolan and South Lee. For sidewalks and CIP, there's $100,000 per year, starting in FY '22 on.
So right now we have $100,000 for each.
Correct.
Recurring each year. Okay. All right.
And for this year, the $100,000 spot improvements, $50,000 is for South Maple, and that's progressing. And as Mr. Shields mentioned, with the freeing up of the administrative money, we have $50,000 to finish out the sidewalk near TJ.
Got it.
All right. Thank you all. Is there any other comments? I don't see any other hands raised.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, of course.
I just want to thank Mr. Shields for that report and to commend our staff for the awards they received from VML. There are a lot of people who are members of VML and it's really impressive that our staff did so well and were able to compete against other jurisdictions larger and smaller than ours. I also just, it has not been an easy nine months for anybody in Falls Church. And those who have been working for the city have really been putting their heart and soul into it. So I would like to thank all of them. And as the chair of the Government Operations Committee say, that you have kept our government operating and for the good of all of us. I really do appreciate that.
All right. Well said. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move on to business on the agenda? All right, Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and call the first item?
I will. We have TO 20-18, Ordinance to amend Chapter 26 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, City Vehicle License, Sections 26 through 68 through 26 through 74.
All right. Before I move on to staff report, let me ask you, how was public comment working on this item?
We did not receive anybody, any comments at all on this, and we didn't receive anybody signing up to speak for this item.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Acosta, are you handling this particular item?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right. Well, welcome back.
Thanks.
What you got for us?
Thank you. Well, good evening, and I'm going to try to be quick because I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight. But I come before you tonight to present the second reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 26 of the C code, which would move the city of Falls Church from an annual vehicle license decal to a permanent license decal. Advances in license plate reader technology now allow localities to find and register vehicles that have moved into their locality with more efficiency. And the use of the license plate reader is also extended to the collection of taxes by the treasurer's office. And these are basically the two reasons why decals first came into widespread use in the early. the early '70s throughout Virginia, including Falls Church. But now the pendulum is swinging the opposite direction, and most localities in the state have moved to eliminate the fiscal license due to the aforementioned advances in technology. Out of 323 cities, counties, and towns in Virginia, only 19 still issue car license decals. Most of those 19 localities are smaller localities that either don't have the technology or sometimes they have town dumps or transfer stations, and they need the decal to identify vehicles for access. Also, most of our neighbors have moved to eliminate the decal. In Northern Virginia, there's only two localities that still issue car decals, and that is the City of Falls Church and the City of Fairfax. So why move to a permanent decal instead of eliminating it entirely? The presence or absence of a decal on a vehicle helps determine at a glance if a car has been licensed in Falls Church and will therefore be placed on our tax rolls. This enforcement effort is carried out mostly by our parking enforcement officers by issuing citations to car with expired decals or no decal. The officers issue approximately 350 tickets per year for this infraction, and revenues from these tickets runs about $18,000 per year. However, savings generated by not having to design, print, and issue around $12,000 to $14,000 decals every year, plus savings on postage from not having to mail them out, would offset any lost revenue from this source. At this time, the City Treasurer and the Commissioner of Revenue are both in agreement in recommending that the city move to a permanent motor vehicle license decal. A permanent decal would mean no more removing and reapplying the city sticker each fall, no more worrying for our citizens about having the correct sticker. Taxpayer frustration over parking citations received for not having the current year's decal will be greatly reduced, as will staff time spent on citizen complaints and requests for mitigation of parking fines. Enforcement officers would still issue tickets for no decal, but they would first give a warning to citizens without a decal, which would give them time to register their car and bring them into compliance before they would actually issue a ticket. It's important to note that our parking enforcement officers are employed by the Police Department, and they're not allowed in certain apartment buildings or condominium complexes. The Treasurer's Office currently has a license plate reader, or LPR, which was meant to be used for compliance or to link collections. In order to expand the use, which would allow us to totally eliminate the decal if we wished and use the LPR for discovery or finding these unregistered vehicles, we would need to spend about $8,000 for additional software. But the bigger expense to expand the use of the LPR and use it to its fullest extent would mean having the staff resources available to run the LPR, which we do not have at this time. Most localities hire retired police officers or sheriff's deputies on a part-time basis, and they run the license plate reader program. But this is another reason why we're not recommending eliminating the decal at this time. Lastly, the motor vehicle license fee generates $340,000 annually. And if it was decided to eliminate the annual license fee, the personal property tax rate would need to be increased by 22 cents from $5 per $100 of value to $5.22 per $100 of value in order to offset that lost revenue. This is a policy question that the council can consider as part of the adoption of the FY22 budget and the calendar year 2021 tax rate when those items are before council in the spring of 2021. That concludes my report. And does anyone have any questions?
Well, we'll find out. Thank you, A, for that report, and B, let's find out if anyone has any questions.
Sure.
Any questions from council?
Oh, can I interject something real quick? I just wanted to say, even though nobody commented, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, you're the first question, so go ahead.
Okay. I'm the first question. Even though nobody wrote in, none of the public wrote in to comment on this, we did hear from a lot of people on Tax Day, which October 5th, when all the personal property taxes were due, we saw quite a few people in the office. And it was universally, everyone said, great, I'm glad, no more scraping off, you know, when do I get that permanent decal? So we had a very positive response for it.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Acosta?
Jody, just one.
Sure.
I think we talked about last time, I think on annual basis, you mentioned it was like 300 or 350 tickets a year that we issue for not having a decal.
Right.
And that amounted to about $20,000 per year. Is that right?
Approximately, yes.
So that remains, because then they'll just use the permanent decal for that enforcement?
Right. They would use it, but they also issued tickets for no decal, for people who just don't have a decal. So they would give a warning to those people first to get them to come in and register their car. If they still didn't register it, then they would wind up getting a ticket. So they would still be issuing tickets for that, just not for the expired decal.
Got it. So we think that's still $20,000 a year in revenue, or what's?
Well, it was $18,000 last year, and yeah, that's approx, but I don't know, I couldn't tell the difference between a ticket issued for no decal or expired decal. It's the same violation code.
Got it. And do you have a rough sense of how many hours of the parking enforcement officer's time it is to issue those 350 tickets?
I do not. I would have to, I'd have to ask them. I can, I can ask them about it, about how long it takes to write a ticket for that.
Yeah. Because I certainly support the less hassle of not having to replace it with an annual decal. But I think, as I've mentioned in previous comments, what I'd be a bigger fan of is actually no decals at all and not bothering with it. Because my sense is that that officer's time might be better spent on high priority items. And so why go through the hassle even of permanent decal if it really brings in $20,000 total for the year? And if we think there's more important things like parking violations, or speeding, or other things that the public safety aide could be doing instead? So I'll support this tonight, but again, I just want to raise the broader issue that I'd rather see us not do decals, period, and not even manage the $20,000 in cost, given that it seems like such a low revenue item for us. And that frees up resources to do other things, I think, based on this council's request about enforcing other areas.
Right.
Especially around residential neighborhood speeding and stop signs and that sort of thing.
Sure, sure.
So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there other questions or comments?
Could I ask a question?
Of course.
I should know this by now because I've listened to this presentation, but if we had no decal at all, we would then be reliant on the LPR to pick up whether the vehicle had been even registered in the city? So is enabling us to collect the car tax on it? Is that right? I mean, if we don't have any decal, how do you know that I have registered my car with the city? It's actually a process, you know, the staff time and the
Right.
equipment, software, and so forth. How do we know?
Right. Well, if we, you can use the LPR for discovery to find cars that are not registered, but we would need the staff to run it, and we would need that additional software, which is about $8,000. But the bigger expense obviously is the part-time staff that would need to operate it. But additionally, the Commissioner of Revenue's office has access to DMV tapes where they get them, I think they can get them monthly, and they would download newly registered cars through the DMV into our software, and they would assess the cars, get them on our tax rolls that way. The problem with that is that a lot of people don't change their DMV address. So that's why you need that additional discovery piece of either a decal or the LPR, you know, and the staff to run it, is to find those people. And some people, you know, they just don't think of it, but some people also do it deliberately because they don't want to pay taxes. So you would need that in order to catch all of them. You can't only rely on the DMV tapes.
But right now, we don't use the decal to enforce registration, right? We're only using it to issue the violation of not having a decal?
We do, we do use the decal for discovery, for registration as well. So right now, if the police officer or the enforcement officer, say they go into, you know, a neighborhood and they see a car without a decal, first they check the license plate to see where it's registered. If it's registered in Falls Church, then they would give them a warning and say, hey, you need to register your car. If you don't register your car in, you know, by 60 days, then we're going to give you an actual ticket. So those warnings actually get a lot of people to come into. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my question, I think. I mean, also, there's staff time and maybe some technology expense in the Commissioner of Revenue's office to go through the process of, you know, screening the DMV tapes, so.
Right. That's correct.
And the buy and buy, someday, there'll be an all-technology solution for this. There'll be some gantry that we drive under or pass, and, you know, that will read every car and, you know, send a citation to anybody who's not registered where they belong. But we're, we're not there yet.
That's right.
And until we get there, there's some combination of older technologies and personnel and software and so forth. That is, the only thing standing between us and somebody, you know, not registering their car in the City of Falls Church and therefore not paying the personal property tax that they owe us, which gets to be a substantial amount of money.
Right, right. And that's the bigger revenue piece, you know, much greater than the ticket revenue.
Right. Exactly. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? I'm going to repeat one that I made a while ago, which is maybe not technically before us tonight, but the notion of paying for a decal that we're not providing, and the notion that a decal is not tax deductible, whereas a tax is. And so, to my mind, come spring, and hopefully I'll remember it, and if I don't remember it, hopefully you'll remind me to remember it, Ms. Acosta. But I think it's much better that this amount of revenue be more appropriately charged to what it is, which is not for a decal, the $30 for a decal that we're not providing, and be tax deductible to the extent folks itemize their taxes. It provides a very small benefit to them, but a benefit nonetheless. So come springtime, I'm going to revisit that, as long as my memory doesn't fail me too badly, so.
Okay.
All right. Unless there are any other questions or comments, why don't we see if there's a motion to be had? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt TO 20-18.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Duncan on the second, and Madam Clerk, you've already indicated there is no public comment for this item, correct?
Correct.
All right. So will you call the vote, please?
I will. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
All right. We're going to move on to the next item, and Mr. Lichtenhouse will have something to read. Why don't we at least call the item, and then you can read your recusal or whatever it might be characterized, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you call the item?
Did you want me to read both of the items and the sale of city-owned land item, or how?
If that's a gribble with the city attorney, then yes. Ms. McCroskey, are you on the call?
Yes, yes, that would be fine.
All right.
Sorry, I'm on mute.
That's okay. Madam Clerk, go ahead then.
All right. We have TR 20-33, Resolution to amend the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to change the designation of approximately half an acre of land known as the city lot located on Park Place, Real Property Code Number 53-104-015, from business to mixed use on the city's future land use plan map on application by Broad and Washington LLC. Second item is TR 20-34, Resolution 1, to grant a special exception for residential uses within a mixed-use development project, and 2, to increase the building height with a bonus of 16 feet to a maximum height of 91 feet for a mixed-use development project on approximately 3.16 acres of land located at 100 North Washington Street and 127 and 131 East Broad Street and Park Place, Real Property Code Numbers 53-104-051, 53-104-036, 53-104-050, and 53-104-015 on application by Broad and Washington LLC. And the third item is a motion to refer sale of city-owned land known as the parking lot property on Park Place, RPC's number, RPC numbers 52-309-412 and 52-309-414 to Planning Commission for a recommendation.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Lichtenhouse, who may have something to say. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yep. After consulting with the city attorney, I've determined that the Virginia Conflict of Interests Act does not require that I formally disqualify myself from participation or that I make a statement on the record regarding these matters. However, my own professional interests and the professional interest of members of my immediate family may be indirectly affected by council's action on this next item. Therefore, I will abstain from participation in this matter. Thank you. I asked the city clerk text me when these matters have been discussed and closed on the agenda. Thanks.
I will.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. So, Mr. Shields, how is this proposed to go forward? Does staff have a presentation they'd like to give, and then the applicant?
Yes, Mayor Tarter, here's what I would propose, is that we start with a staff presentation, which would be provided by Akita Ruzi, our principal planner, who's on this project. Becky Witzman, our Economic Development Director, would follow with just a summary of the voluntary concessions. That would then be followed by insight properties. They would provide an update to the City Council on changes to the project since you last saw it. And then that would be followed by Q and A. Then I would propose then there'd be, the council consider a motion, and then open up the public hearing, and then finish with council comments and final consideration of the, of the motion. If that motion then is approved, then the council then would move to, as noted earlier, the consideration of the sale of the city-owned parcel of about approximately one-half of an acre, which is currently used for public parking. And the request on that item, like the request on the first two items, is to refer this item out for public comment, and specifically to refer the land sale to the Planning Commission so it can do its role as called for in the city charter of considering this sale in the light of the city's comprehensive plan and to provide a formal recommendation to the City Council on it. So as the staff recommendation on all these items is in favor of the motion to, to have these go out to board and commission, comment for their recommendations. If that is done, then these items would come back to the City Council on the schedule that has been discussed with the developer and working through kind of what our processes would need to be. They would come back to then to the City Council on January 25th for final consideration. For the land sale, just one other step, if this, if it is referred out to the Planning Commission, we would anticipate that the land sale question would be, have a recommendation from the Planning Commission in November, and then if, then the City Council could then consider an ordinance authorizing the sale with a first reading in December and a final consideration also on that January 25th date. I hope that summary made sense. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if not, I will turn it over to Ms. Ruzi for the planning staff report.
So why don't we hear from Ms. Ruzi, and then maybe if the city attorney wants to even kind of gives additional detail about this or any other matters, if she feels appropriate, we can hear from her as to the number of people that need to vote and things like that, so that everyone understands procedurally what's going on. And then we can go ahead and hear from Ms. Witzman and then the applicant, if that's okay with folks. But why don't we go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Ruzi? Ms. Ruzi?
Good evening. Akita Ruzi with planning. This item is before you tonight for referral to boards and commissions. For a quick summary of the proposed project, before I get to the staff recommendation, the development site includes a total of four properties at 100 North Washington Street, 127 East Broad Street, 131 East Broad Street, and a city parking lot on Park Place. Total site area is approximately 3.16 acres. Um, just total site area is approximately 3.16 acres. Um, the proposed project entails a mixed-use building with a maximum height of ninety-one feet. Uh, the uses include three hundred and thirty-nine residential rental apartments above ground-floor retail. Ground-floor retail includes sixty-five hundred square feet of retail along the frontage of the project on Washington and Broad Streets, um, and five thousand square feet of community theater space, um, approximately, and approximately fifty-six thousand square feet of Whole Foods Market at the corner of Broad and Washington. Um, also included is a ground, uh, ground-level public plaza at the corner of the Broad and Washington. Um, under and above-ground structured parking garage with a total of six hundred and eighty-six parking spaces is proposed. Um, the proposed building height varies from sixty-seven feet to ninety-one feet along East Broad Street, with the lowest heights proposed along Lawton Street to tallest heights proposed at the corner of Broad and Washington, uh, streets. Um, the current uses on the site include a city-owned public parking lot on Park Place, a four-story office and retail building at the intersection of East Broad and North Washington Streets, a vacant restaurant building, and a two-story office building at the intersection of East Broad and Lawton Streets. Um, the current zoning designation is B two central business for all of the properties involved. Uh, the comprehensive plan future land use map designation is business for the city lot and mixed use for the three properties owned by Insight. In terms of land use actions requested, the applications include, um, comprehensive plan future land use map amendment from business to mixed use for the city lot on Park Place, a special exception to allow residential development within the mixed-use development and for a height bonus of sixteen feet with a maximum height of ninety-one feet. Uh, the proposed sale of the city lot will also require approval by council following a recommendation by planning commission, uh, which is a separate action item for the council this evening. Um, the approval process for these application will, uh, applications will consist of referral of the application by city council tonight to boards and commissions, uh, recommendation by a planning commission and other boards and commissions, and a final approval by city council. In terms of history and background, the initial Broad and Washington development application was filed in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the initial application, uh, did include the city lot in two thousand and fifteen, but the final iteration of the development proposed, the development proposal approved by city council on April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, did not include the city lot. Um, as part of that approval, the city council, uh, approved resolution twenty eighteen dash eighteen to change the designation of the site from business and transitional to mixed use on the city's future land use map. Ordinance nineteen eighty-two that amended the official zoning district map by rezoning one thirty-one East Broad Street from T one transitional district to B two central business district. Um, and resolution twenty eighteen dash nineteen granting special exception for residential uses within the mixed-use development project and height bonus. Um, while the approved special exception expires on April, uh, ninth, two, twenty twenty-one, which is thirty-six months after approval, those rezoning and the comprehensive plan map amendment approvals are permanent and do not expire pursuant to this code of Virginia. Um, key differences between the original and new development proposals, uh, there is a detailed comparison, uh, chart on page nine, but just as sort of a summary change, uh, differences include expand a land area, which includes the city lot, removal of previously proposed office building, inclusion of the Whole Foods Market at, as an anchor tenant, ground-level public open plaza, uh, three hundred and thirty-nine rental apartment units proposed. Uh, the two, uh, the approved plan in two thousand and eighteen had two hundred and ninety-five units and other related changes in parking and voluntary concessions. Um, in terms of council meetings today, the city council held several work sessions and a public hearing on September fourteenth. Um, on September fourteenth, city council deferred action on referral of the application to city boards and commissions to October thirteenth. At that meeting, council requested further development of several key elements of the project, including interim parking, architecture, affordable housing, uses, and neighborhood support from adjacent businesses as well as nearby residents. These key items and the applicant's progress to date are provided on page six of the report. I believe the applicant plans to provide an update as part of their presentation this evening on some of these items, so I'll let them speak more on that. Additionally, on October fifth, city council held a work session and received updates from the applicant specifically related to architectural improvements and interim parking. Um, in terms of public engagement, the applicant hosted a virtual neighborhood meeting with Lawton Street neighbors on September twenty-eighth, a virtual town hall meeting on September thirtieth. The city council also held a public walking tour on September twenty-ninth. At all of these meetings, public received presentations on the latest development proposal and had opportunities to ask questions and provide feedback directly to the applicant, I mean, developer. Um, general public feedback heard at these meetings are summarized on page seven of the report. Um, in terms of staff review, the first submission of the new development proposal was received on November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. Since then, the applicant has provided two revised submissions in which they continue to refine the project based on guidance received from city council and staff. Um, these import, uh, improvements to date include details, uh, and minimum commitments on interim parking, further development of architecture and reductions in building scale, reduction in residential unit numbers, increase in total parking provided, and further development of Lawton Street elevations with neighborhood input. Uh, these improvements begin to address some of the key staff recommendations provided on page nine of the staff report. Um, staff will continue to work with the applicant on these items between now and final consideration of the project if the city council refers the project. Um, in accordance with the review process outlined zoning code, uh, special exception applications are evaluated based on the primary and secondary criteria. The primary criteria are considered to be essential to the character and well-being of the city, whereas the secondary criteria are discretion, uh, discretionary in nature. These general SE objectives include comp plan consistency, fiscal impact, quality of uses, building scale, and various community benefits, including transportation, affordable housing, open space, and environmental sustainability, among others. Based on staff's preliminary analysis, the project begins to demonstrate many of the objectives under the SE criteria and provides community, community benefits in several important areas. Um, Becky will cover some of these community benefits in more detail and context of voluntary concessions after me, but in transportation improvements to note, the project provides upgrades the existing crosswalks on two legs of the Broad and Washington intersection to brick pavers, uh, brick crosswalks on Lawton Street, Park Place, and North Washington Street, uh, pedestrian connection through the proposed Lawton Street Pocket Park, median cut and, uh, signal modification on North Washington at Park Place to improve access, uh, bus shelters on East Broad, uh, Broad Street and North Washington Street, complete streetscape around the site, and bike, uh, bike share contributions. Um, in terms of comprehensive plan and downtown small-area plan consistency, some of these transportation improvements are discussed as key objectives towards creating a vibrant downtown area. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the application includes a comprehensive plan map amendment for the city lot from business to mixed use designation to allow the concurrent, uh, concurrent processing and approval of a special exception to facilitate the proposed development. The remainder of the site was changed from business and transitional to mixed use as part of the two thousand and eighteen development approval. Um, the requested map amendment would allow the incorporation of the city lot into overall project proposal. Additionally, both the comp plan and the area plan identified a project site for potential redevelopment within the city's downtown area, because since, consistent with some of the key objectives in these plans, the proposed development would provide a mixed-use project with an anchor grocery store at the intersection of two major commercial corridors in the city. Uh, the project would also result in consolidation of fragmented parcels for a more efficient use of land with multi-story building and structured parking. It also offers a mixture of residential, retail, and entertainment, community theater uses, uh, with a corner plaza. The potential use of the city lot for a public garage that serves surrounding uses, including any redevelopment into one hundred block and of Broad, uh, Broad Street, is also discussed in the area plan. Um, and as such, the incorporation of the city lot in the overall project is supported in the area plan. Um, finally, in terms of fiscal impact, the pro, uh, projected net annual revenue is between one point one seven million and one point five million for the current proposal. In comparison, the net annual range for the approved two thousand and eighteen plan was approximately eight hundred and five thousand dollars to one point one million dollars. Uh, the current uses on the site produce a net annual fiscal impact of approximately three hundred and ten thousand dollars based on a two thousand and fifteen report, and the current numbers are even lower based on the applicant's numbers. Uh, with that, staff recommends approval of the proposed motion to refer the application to boards and commissions for review and recommendation to council. Um, a project schedule is available at the end of the staff report. Some key dates include planning commission work session and boards and commission town hall on October twenty-first, planning commission public hearing on November eighteenth. Uh, the boards and commission review will occur in October and November with comments due to council um, by November twentieth, followed by work sessions with city council to review those comments. The applicant intends to submit a revised submission in December based on comments from boards and commissions, staff, and council, um, and a final council public hearing is anticipated on January twenty-fifth. Um, that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to take questions now or after, um, Becky's presentation or the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, so why don't we hear from, uh, Ms. Witzman and then see if the city attorney has anything she'd like to add as well? Ms. Witzman?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'll be brief in reviewing a summary of the primary community benefits associated with the Insight project this evening. Uh, hopefully there on the screen, you will see a summary of the primary community benefits associated with the Insight project. There are approximately ten of them listed on the slide. I'll go through them pretty quickly. Um, where you see a dollar figure in red, that's a number that appears in the current voluntary concessions agreement with the city. Proceeding with the rest of the list, you'll see a school capital contribution of two million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, calculated at seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars per unit. You'll see a commitment to affordable housing by providing twenty-one multifamily rental units, equivalent to six point two percent of the units, with no expiration and a possible cash-in lieu option. You'll see a parks and library capital fund contribution of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, calculated at five hundred dollars per unit, traffic calming and permit parking for Lawton Street in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, a stormwater fund contribution of twenty thousand dollars for tree and vegetation planting in the trips run and four-mile-run watershed, a bike share commitment up to an annual operating cost of twenty thousand dollars, a creative cauldron rent sub, subsidy for five thousand square feet of ground-floor space, and the developers have estimated the present value of that subsidy at two million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, a public parking commitment whereby free interim replacement public parking will be made available during all periods of the construction for adjacent businesses' use, and sixty-four permanent free public spaces will be in, included in the completed project. Developers also committing to several environmental VCs, including lead gold, a minimum of five electric vehicle charging stations, a possible solar panels on the roof in the future, and stormwater detention twenty percent higher than the city code requirement. And last but not least, transportation improvements include the Park Place and North Washington intersection signal, a Broad and Washington signal replacement and an intersection redesign of two legs, and lastly, a new, new bus shelters on Broad Street and Washington Street. And that includes my summary of the community benefits.
All right. Thank you very much. And I don't know if the city attorney, you're certainly not required to say anything, but if you'd like to speak to either the, um, numbers required for different votes, um, either tonight or at subsequent meetings, or address anything else, um, that you think is of interest to council or the community, you're certainly welcome to now.
Yes, I will. Um, so let me just say that with regard to the voting, the one requirement for a supermajority in this matter will be that the, um, on the final vote to sell the property, which will happen in, um, January on the twenty-fifth, the action must be taken by three-quarters of the elected members of council. So that will be, as long as the council has more than four elected members, irrespective of whether anybody disqualifies themselves, five votes will be required. And so that will be the requirement, um, whether you have, uh, the six members who are now elected to council or an addition mem, additional member elected. That will only apply, however, to the vote to sell the property, which will be, uh, second reading on the ordinance. Your referral tonight is only to the planning commission for them to make a recommendation. You simply need to have a majority of a quorum, and that will also be true when you, um, when you take action to get, grant first reading, um, on that ordinance in December. Um, I also would like to take a moment and just, uh, mention a couple of things about the deed restrictions that have been discussed tonight. First of all, the, uh, deed for the majority of that parking lot does require that it be used for free public parking. However, it is important to remember, it does not require that that property be used solely or exclusively for that purpose. Um, this, in discussing this potential sale with the applicant, um, we have worked to use the sale of the property to ensure that that public parking continues to be provided. It'll be free public parking twenty-four hours a day, um, within the garage on that site. Further, in order to protect the city, we have asked that the developer, um, take on the cost of going to court to ensure, or taking whatever other actions are necessary to ensure that that, those issues are fully resolved before, um, we go to closing on the property. And so we have the city, we did not want to have the city take on that cost. Um, and if, for any reason, there would not be a resolution that said that the city, um, the property could be used in this manner, um, after the action in court, a declaratory judgment, then there would be no sale of the property, and the project, as it is today, would not be able to go forward, and the parking would remain. So in all cases, I think that we've worked to protect the city's interests to make sure that there is that free public parking available. We've also obtained the interim agreement for the six months, but I think it, what we have done ensures that the sale of the property is used to further the public parking, and we will, um, not have the city have to incur the cost of ensuring with the courts that that work is, uh, resolved. Uh, it is not a developer decision as to whether it's resolved or not. It will be ultimately a court decision. So that's all I wanted to say, and make sure that some of those issues related to the restrictions on parking are, um, put to bed. You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Is, is there any other staff presentation, or should we move on now to the applicant? I'll take that as it's time to move to the applicant. So I'm going to turn it over to the applicant, but keep in mind, we have heard this case probably three to four times in the past six weeks. So we don't need a full presentation, but your, um, your materials and presentation should focus on the changes that you've made in past days. So with that, I'll turn it over to the development team and welcome you once more to, uh, to our virtual meeting. Thank you for coming out.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, my name is Scott Adams. I'm a Landy's attorney with McGuire Woods and, uh, also representing Insight Property Group, who's the developer, uh, of the project at Broad and Washington. Um, joined tonight, uh, on this call by Maury Stern from Insight Property Group, and also by Neville Fernandez, who's our architect at MVNA Architects. And, um, as you mentioned, we're back before the council tonight, uh, seeking referral to boards and commissions for the Broad and Washington project. Um, I think as we've, we've mentioned previously, for us, it's absolutely critical that this project moves forward tonight, um, because frankly, we're, we're out of time with, um, where we're at in the, the process. And, you know, the council, the prior meetings has placed a very high bar, uh, for us to, to move forward. And, um, frankly, we've, we've now cleared that bar. Um, and you'll hear some of the details of that, uh, tonight. Um, and really having addressed every major issue and almost every minor issue that's been raised by the council at its prior meetings, uh, which you'll see tonight, are significant upgrades to the architecture and the massing on the project. And that includes reducing the height of the building on the city lot. Um, also changes to the massing on Lawton in response to, uh, comments that we've received from our neighbors on Lawton. Um, with regard to the parking, um, a reminder that we've obtained written agreements for sixty-five off-site parking spaces for the three to six months where we're not able to provide public parking onsite. Um, and also, um, happy to announce tonight that we've obtained written agreements and support from Clarence Don's and Thompson's Italian for the project moving forward. We think this project is ready for referral to boards and commissions, and, uh, we hope that the city council will, will move it forward, um, tonight. Um, we understand that we've been in before the, the council a number of times in recent weeks. Uh, but we did want to make sure we still provided a, a comprehensive overview of the, the project and the benefits that are being provided to all residents in the city. Um, and also obviously focus on the significant changes that we've made since, uh, September fourteenth. focus on the significant changes that we've made since September 14th. So if we go to the next slide. So quickly, in terms of overall project benefits, I think as the council knows, there are significant fiscal benefits associated with this project, and the net revenue that's generated for the city, which, as you know, helps to keep the tax rate low in the city and also helps to support other efforts and priorities in the city, such as the stormwater upgrades and traffic calming that the council has talked about the past couple of meetings when we've been on the agenda. Additionally, we're providing a permanent home for Creative Cauldron, which is an absolute treasure in the city of Falls Church, and really critical to maintaining the arts community in the city. Additionally, we're providing a significant amount of open space, and also as part of that, public parks, including the Plaza Park at the corner, which we think is really going to be a significant gathering place for residents of the city. Additionally, we've got significant environmental commitments that are being made in terms of green building commitments at Lead Gold, exceeding the city's stormwater management requirements, providing for future solar, making contributions to the city's stormwater fund for off-site tree planting. Additionally, on public parking, I think as we've mentioned a number of times, continuing to provide the 64 public spaces that currently exist on the city lot, both during the interim while construction is occurring, and then also in the permanent condition, and also providing within the parking garage the ability for the public to pay to park at 74 additional spaces within the project. Finally, on the public parking, and one of the issues that, you know, we've certainly been working hard to work through, related to the impact on the adjacent restaurants, and as I mentioned, we've reached written agreements with both of those restaurants, who are now supporting the project moving forward. In terms of transportation, really providing a robust TDM plan and multimodal aspects of the project, so that we're limiting the vehicle trips coming to and from the site, and really promoting other modes of transportation, whether that is bike or ride share or transit. And finally, on affordable housing, going above and beyond the city's affordable housing policy and requirements to provide a lot of flexibility that will allow the city to target lower AMI units, or lower AMI income tiers, which is really where the affordable housing need lies. So we can go to the next slide.
So, yeah, Maury Stern with Insight Property Group. As Scott mentioned, over the last month, but especially over the last week, we've done extensive outreach. We heard the major concerns raised by the council a month ago, a week ago, and have done an incredible amount of work to get to where we are tonight on the three major issues: architecture, the building height on both Lawton Street and Park Place, and then reaching agreement, as Scott mentioned, with the adjacent businesses. So if we go to the next slide, I'll dive into a little more detail on each of those. On Lawton Street, just to give everyone some background and history, you know, since we submitted our application in November of 2019, we've had six either in-person or virtual meetings with the Lawton neighborhood, and dozens and dozens of emails, phone calls, and other communication. And through that process and our various updates to our plans, we've not only maintained all of the commitments we made to Lawton Street and on Lawton Street from our 2018 plan, but also made significant changes to the project in response to those meetings and emails and phone calls. So we've carried through everything from 2018 that we agreed to, not having balconies on Lawton Street, limiting the views from our courtyards into neighbors' yards and onto Lawton Street. We've improved the streetscape on Lawton Street, we've contributed $50,000, as Becky mentioned, to improve traffic calming and create a parking permit, residential parking permit plan on Lawton Street. We've added a crosswalk at Lawton Street, and we've agreed to no retail signage or retail entrances at the corner or near the corner of Lawton Street. Through the process, and we'll touch on it in more detail in a second, we've also enhanced the architecture on Lawton Street and responded to the concerns we've heard from the neighbors, and most recently, concerns related to the way the building steps down and the height at the corner of Lawton and Broad Street. And also, in response to the neighbors' concerns, we've reduced the height on the city lot portion of the project to address the concern specifically of 107 Lawton Street. If we go to the next slide, talk a little more detail about what's changed on Lawton Street. So as you can see here, we've stepped down the building at the corner by a floor, and then added an additional step at 35 feet, before the building then steps down to its lowest point at 25 feet. In a second, we'll show a comparison, but this was directly in response to feedback from the neighbors who preferred this two-step version, which was in our 2018 plan, to the previous version we showed, which was a single step from a full-height building at the corner to 25 feet as we go down Lawton Street. So if we go to the next slide, see a little more detail, the comparison of the two plans. So on the top, the 2020 plan, today's plan, so for 90 feet from the corner of Lawton and Broad Street, we've dropped a floor from the plans we showed a week ago, and then stepped down the building to 35 feet for another about 46 feet, and then the final step-down is where it was before at 25 feet, which is then about 40 feet back from the property line of 107 Lawton. Versus the 2018 plan, we had that step-down to 35 feet, but we retained that other floor at the corner of Lawton and Broad Street. So this plan has not only kind of mirrored that step-down, but dropped a floor off of the corner, reduced the height at the corner of Lawton and Broad Streets. Go to the next slide, please. Also looking at the elevation from the corner, actually, I mentioned this also on the previous slides, one of the other comments we received from the neighbors was the preference for stone and other nicer materials along the Lawton Street elevation, and to get rid of the, we heard comments like the jail-like look of Lawton Street and the metal panels. So we've responded to that and included stone along the Lawton elevation and added significant plantings. And at the corner, you can see here, we've dropped the floor and really responded to the other concerns we've heard about the height facing Lawton Street. Next slide, please. On Park Place, we also heard comments, concerns about the height and the impact it specifically had on 107 Lawton Street. So on this slide, you can see, outlined in red and the white area, is what we've removed from the fourth floor of Residential along Park Place, and it's about a 32-foot additional setback from Park Place, and an additional 35 feet setback from the property, from the edge of the building facing 107 Lawton Street. So the fourth floor of the building, adjacent to 107 Lawton Street, is now about 75 feet back from the property line, and as you'll see in a second, almost invisible, if not invisible, from the backyard of 107 Lawton Street. If you go to the next slide, you'll see this in a little more detail. So this is the same rendering we showed last week with the four floors of Residential along Park Place, and then if you go to the next slide... Sorry, sorry if you don't mind, just put it back to the other one, apologies. This is three floors of Residential along Park Place. So this is the reduced massing, looking down Park Place, towards the end of the street and 107 Lawton Street. So you can see that we retain the kind of modern architecture, the same elements we had a week ago, we've retained the ability to have artwork along, or some sort of art piece along the elevation facing Clarendons and Thompson's, but we've dropped the floor that you can no longer see the fourth floor from this view. If you go to the next slide, this would be the same reduced fourth floor from the corner of Park and across Washington, and as you can see here, you can just start to see that fourth floor, but it only appears when you're this far back from the corner, but when you're closer up or behind 107 Lawton Street, you don't see that fourth floor. Go to the next slide. So this is kind of reiterating what I mentioned before of the reduction in height and the impact on 107 Lawton Street. So the height of the building now is 46 feet, at a 40-foot setback from the property line adjacent to 107 Lawton, which we feel is compatible with the maximum height allowed in the adjacent zoning of 107 Lawton Street. Next slide, please. This is the rendering I referenced that I think we showed last week of the backyard of 107 Lawton Street, and as you can see, with the existing trees and no additional trees, the building is fully obscured. We also intend to add trees on our side to further obscure it, but without the fourth floor, you really can hardly see the building itself. And I will also say that, in response to early meetings with the owners of 107 Lawton Street, you'll remember, we pulled the building back from an initial setback of 20 feet to 40 feet, and then we also have pulled the, most of the window lines back from that 40-foot line by using balconies and adding planters and doing other things to shield the views both of the owners of 107 Lawton into the units here and vice versa, the residents looking down into the backyard of 107 Lawton Street. Next slide, please. Scott also referenced the adjacent businesses, and this is where we've spent a significant amount of time over the last week and made a lot of progress. So as Scott mentioned, we've come to an agreement with Clarendons, they're supporting the project, we have their full support, and we have a partnership going forward, and we've addressed not only their concerns, but we feel like we're now a team moving forward together. And similarly with Thompson's, I mentioned last week that we had not yet fully started our negotiations, but we, you know, in really rapid succession, we went from an initial conversation on Friday to a signed term sheet today, and are very, feel very positive about our relationship going forward with them and addressing their concerns as well, both in the voluntary concessions and in our agreement with them. So we've made, you know, significant progress, we heard loud and clear the urgency of getting these businesses on board, and we now have them both onboard. If you go to the next slide, I'll turn it back to Scott to talk about parking.
Sure, and I guess despite the agreements with the adjacent businesses, we have not backed off at all from our commitments on mitigating impacts during and after construction. So during the construction of the site, just as a reminder, we will be providing 64 public parking spaces onsite for the great majority of construction of the site, both within the existing city lot, within a temporary parking lot that'll be right at the corner of Broad and Washington, and then ultimately, within the garage while the rest of the building is being constructed. For that three-to-six-month period when we will not be able to provide that onsite parking, we have written agreements for 65 spaces on nights and weekends with the Park Washington condos for 50 spaces, and then the owners at 107 Park Place for 15 spaces. Additionally, during all phases of construction of the project, we've committed to providing very detailed signage and wayfinding, so that the public knows exactly where they're supposed to park and to go, to make sure they know exactly where to go, to make it easy for them to come to the city to patronize the existing restaurants at Clarendons and Thompson's and the State Theater. If you go to the next slide. One of the comments that we heard last week was regarding the ability of, or I guess the provision of daytime parking. And so luckily, the city has a fairly recent parking study that shows actual pre-COVID utilization of the city's parking, in particular during the day. And I won't go through all of these numbers, but the, in looking at that study, between sort of the lunchtime, you know, daytime peak, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., there are 11 spaces, there's a surplus, I guess, of 11 spaces over what the current utilization is in the city parking lot, and then from 1:00 to 3:00, there are, there's a seven-space surplus over and above what is the current utilization of the city parking lot during those time periods. And all of that parking is located within 500 to 600 feet of the site. So for the, you know, 13 to 18 cars that are parking in the city lot on a weekday between 11:00 and 3:00, those folks will be able to find parking during the day within the existing city parking lots, and, which are within a very easy walk to Clarendons and Thompson's. So we think that during the day, you know, there is sufficient parking within the city already for those users who are coming to the restaurants during the day. If we go to the next slide. So just, I guess, on the public parking on the permanent basis, once we get the garage in place, I did just want to reiterate that the city is not giving up the public parking benefit as part of this project. It just, instead of 64 spaces on a surface lot, there are now 64 spaces in a parking structure, and those will be guaranteed for public access with city easements that will allow the public to come into the garage, park in those spaces 24/7, with no impediments or gates for the public coming in to use those spaces. So really, there is no diminishment of the public benefit to the public parking that currently exists on the city lot, but what the city is getting is the fair market value of the land in addition to the continuing public benefit of the city public parking So did just want to cover that quickly, and then as we mentioned before, in addition to the 64 dedicated public spaces, we currently have 74 spaces that are available for the public to come in and pay to park within the parking garage. If we go to the next slide. And this is just, again, showing the, sort of the areas within the garage where that the shared parking spaces are located, and the prior slide showed where those dedicated parking spaces were, where the shared parking spaces were, but that has not changed since the initial approval. If you go to the next slide. For signage and wayfinding, we have agreed that to incorporate the city's adopted wayfinding signage into the project, both on an interim and a permanent basis, and so we'll be working with city staff and other stakeholders as the project moves forward to identify the amount and location for those wayfinding signs, which again, will be consistent with the design for wayfinding signs that the city recently adopted. If we go to the next slide. And just in terms of, I guess, internal signage within the garage, just wanted to point out again that, you know, our intent is to have both internal wayfinding signage, but also color coordination and other means to really make sure that when the public comes into the parking garage, they know exactly where to go, exactly where they are allowed to park, whether that's in the dedicated public spaces, or their ability to park in the retail shared parking spaces, and clearly stating the cost to do so. If we can move to the next slide. In terms of transportation, we've obviously done a full transportation analysis on the project. As was pointed out at the October 5th meeting, the traffic that is generated as part of this project, for the existing intersections at Broad and Washington and other surrounding intersections, we're not reducing the level of service at those intersections as part of this project. So did just want to point that out, and obviously, we've submitted a transportation impact analysis that has been reviewed by the city, looking at the transportation impact and mitigation measures for the project. We've retained and enhanced the transportation commitments that were made in the 2018 approval, and also continue to limit the number of curb cuts on the project, really reducing that down, which we think creates a much better pedestrian environment with fewer crossings where there are conflicts with cars coming into or out of the site. Additionally, we've made a commitment to adding the fourth leg to the signal at Park and North Washington, and are continuing to move through that process with the city, and getting input from VDOT on their review of placing that signal in place. But, you know, we think that getting that new signal in really is going to provide significant access benefits for the public parking spaces for those adjacent restaurants by making it much easier for people who are coming east on Park, also coming south on Washington Street, to directly access Park Place and the public parking. Also, as I mentioned earlier, really focused on the Also, as I mentioned earlier, really focused on the multimodal aspects of this project, reducing vehicle trips. So promoting transit, promoting bike usage with two bus shelters that we've committed to paying for and installing bike parking, both public parking in racks in the streetscape, but also secured private bike parking within the building. And then also the bike share and committing to the full operational cost for the life of the project for the bike share station. Additionally, we've included laybys on East Broad that are really going to help facilitate food deliveries and ride share to the project, and that's certainly something we've seen in increase of over time. If we go to the next slide. Did want to also talk about street activation. I know that that is something the city cares deeply about and making sure that these projects are promoting great pedestrian environments and promoting active streets with lots of people who want to be in the space. And so we really think that the totality of this project really creates a fantastic pedestrian environment. And that starts with meeting all of the city's streetscape standards in terms of planters' landscape, providing outlets for each tree to help facilitate the city's tree lighting efforts, also providing hose bibs at each one of the landscape plans, and also then undergrounding conduit and pole boxes along the frontage of the property so that it's set up so that when people need to run new conduit within the city, that it's set up to do so, and you're not tearing up the street and you're not tearing up the pedestrian environment. Additionally, we're providing 10-foot clear sidewalks on East Broad and North Washington. We've got the public Plaza Park at the corner, which we really think helps to anchor that pedestrian environment. And then also creating lots of entrances for the Whole Foods, for the retail and restaurants, for the residential lobby, for Creative Cauldron along East Broad and North Washington, to really create those access points in that pedestrian flow that's really going to drive the creation of a great pedestrian environment. And part of that also is just having a Whole Foods at this site, which, part of their strategy is really focused on driving daytime traffic with prepared foods and lunch items, which we think, again, is going to create some great daytime street activity in this part of the city. Also, supporting that outdoor pedestrian activity is the outdoor seating that's being proposed. So obviously, you have seating opportunities for the public within the plaza. You also have several outdoor seating opportunities for Whole Foods, both at the ground floor and the mezzanine. And then we've also provided outdoor seating along East Broad to really pull people down the street and create that connection and that activity all throughout the frontage of the property. So if we go to the next slide. This just gives you a feel for how the outdoor seating in the mezzanine space at Whole Foods will function. Again, really creating, I guess, some verticality for the outdoor experience and that outdoor dining, and again, promoting the street activity for pedestrians. If we go to the next slide. And then this just shows further up Broad Street and the potential for outdoor seating all up and down the frontage of East Broad with the retail tenants and the restaurants that are proposed in addition to Whole Foods. Again, really creating a unified, active space all throughout the frontage of the property. Next slide. From an environmental standpoint, this is something that we're very proud of in terms of the environmental commitments on this project and really exceeding the city's standards and policy for environmental commitments, starting with committing to lead gold for this project, which is a higher standard than most other private development projects have committed to or achieved during the review process. Additionally, setting up the project so that we're ready for solar once that becomes a viable option for this project. But setting up our HVAC and rooftop mechanical equipment so that we're ready to go to install solar in the future. And then also for areas where we're able to do green roofs, which are primarily the three courtyards for the residents, incorporating green roofs into those portions of the property. Again, helping with the stormwater story and the green building story for the project. Additionally, we've made a commitment to electric vehicle charging stations in the parking garage. So we've committed to providing five electric vehicle charging stations within the garage, and then also committed to providing conduit for the future expansion for EV charging within the garage. From a stormwater management perspective, we've committed to providing stormwater management at 20% above the city minimum for a 10-year storm, which is a significant increase in the stormwater capabilities, particularly for a site that currently has no stormwater controls and is almost 100% impervious. This project is going to significantly improve the stormwater capacity in the city. And then also providing a $20,000 contribution to the city's stormwater fund to help pay for off-site planting of trees within different outfalls so that you are, again, helping to green the city, but also helping from a stormwater perspective. If we go to the next slide. From an open space standpoint, we're, again, really proud of the open space that's provided in this project. Between the public and the private spaces, we're providing over an acre of usable open space for both the public and for the residents of this project. And that includes the Plaza Park at the corner that we've talked about previously, also the Linear Park on Lawton, which creates a more passive environment, but also a really nice pedestrian connection for the neighborhood, getting out to Park, Park Place and the restaurants and the State Theater, and frankly, the rest of Downtown Falls Church, really helping to provide some permeability for pedestrians through the area. From a private, open space standpoint, we have three elevated courtyards on the project that include a lot of amenities that you would typically see in a Class A project, both hardscape, landscape, a pool area, outdoor grilling areas, you know, things like that, that are really going to provide those services and amenities for the residents of the project and take some of the pressure off of the use of city parks by the new residents. If we go to the next slide. There's also been a question about just the amount of green space and turf within the project. And we think we've done a very good job of trying to balance the amount of grass and landscape area within the public open spaces and the private open spaces to really create a balance between making sure the site is overwhelmingly green in those open spaces, but also providing some flexibility for the use of the space with hardscape elements that will provide for outdoor concerts, seating opportunities, and things like that. If we go to the next slide. The public plaza, which I think everybody has seen before, but it's something that we're really excited about because it creates that public gathering space right at the zero intersection of the city in a really prominent location that we think is going to be heavily used by the public, and really designing the space for multiple uses by the public, whether that's more passive use of outdoor seating, eating lunch, having a cup of coffee and reading the newspaper, but also having the flexibility to provide for outdoor concerts, outdoor performances by Creative Cauldron, but really creating a space that we think is going to become a treasured part of the city of Falls Church. And I think maybe turn it over to Maury, who has some further updates on kind of what our thinking is on the public part.
Yeah, we're really excited to announce this and then flesh it out through the boards and commissions process, but we received a letter and had a lot of conversation with Tinnerhill Heritage Foundation and Creative Cauldron of the concept of naming the plaza, the Unity and Justice Plaza, and really honoring and educating people on the rich history of the city and its racial and social justice pioneers, and especially in these times, we feel like it's the right thing to do and the right way to sort of honor that history. It was an idea that needs some fleshing out, and we were excited to go through the process of boards and commissions and flesh that out, but I wanted to make sure everyone, you know, we announced that tonight, and it's something we're really excited about working through with the boards and commissions and with Creative Cauldron and Tinnerhill Heritage Foundation as we go further in through the process and into the project. If we go to the next slide. Another view of the public plaza that we've seen before. On the next slide, touch briefly, Scott mentioned the, sorry, one more on the public plaza, and next slide. The Linear Park, we've talked through this before, but it really is a nice passive park that complements the more public and programmed plaza at the corner and provides a connection from Lawton Street to Park Place and really connects the two sides of the project. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that the rendering of this space that we showed before, but get a sense of how the space will be used and kind of the adjacent building and landscaping that we've added. If you go to the next slide. We've touched on it before, you heard a lot of public comment related to Creative Cauldron, but I can't stress enough the importance of creating a permanent home for Creative Cauldron and the deal we've structured with them to fix their rent, to build the space out for them at our own expense to their specifications, provide more square footage than they have currently. And as Becky alluded to, it's a multimillion-dollar commitment in present, you know, present value that we're giving up to bring a tenant that we feel is important to the city and important to our project, and we want to be located here, but it comes at a cost that we're bearing that is part of our public benefit to the city. Next slide, please. We went into a lot more detail on the other elevations, but just briefly on the elevations that have not changed as much. This is obviously the corner of Broad and Washington, the entrance to Whole Foods, the public plaza from across the street, and you can start to see the building as we go down Broad Street, and as you'll see.
There are third-rounded business grants, so another $250,000, I think, to the same 100-and-so businesses that got grants in the first and second round last week. So now I think in total, Wyatt, correct me if I'm wrong, it's $500,000 in business grants that the city has issued?
That is correct. As well as $2,000 that was granted by the graduating class of 2020 with George Mason High School. So we add that to the amount as well. Thank you to them.
Yes, big thanks to them. It'd be great if we could do some, I guess, communication about that. I think the fact that we're a little city, I think we were probably one of the first jurisdictions in the region to be able to move on that. I think goes to the earlier accolades of the city staff on being able to respond to the crisis.
All right, Ms. Conley.
I'd just like to say that the Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting on Friday of this, I think it's Friday of this week.
That is correct. All right, thank you, Mr. Duncan.
And the Economic Development Committee is scheduled to meet on Friday, October 23rd at 1:00. We'll be talking about the agenda at the mayor's scheduling meeting in the morning. And the other thing is, I'd like to thank the clerk and Veronica and Claire for being on board and team tackling the public input. I thought it worked very well, and I look forward to more of that in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Any other comments or reports? Is there anything else anyone would like to say before we adjourn? All right, thank you all very much. We appreciate it, and why don't we go ahead and adjourn, and we'll, at least some of us will reconvene at our mayor's meeting in another 10 hours or so.